Twenty-one Village of Webster Board Meeting. If you would stand please for the pledge of allegiance and you, you lead it.
I fight the freedom of this society of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and you lead it. At this time, we have a public hearing scheduled for seven o'clock to receive input and comment from the public in connection with the proposed application for a brownfield opportunity area nomination application. So if anybody would like to address the board regarding that, it was detailed in the last meeting and it is available also for your perusal in our office. So if anybody would like to address the board regarding feelings regarding that.
Do you need a vote to open the public hearing?
Right now, we are waiting to see if anybody wishes to address the board regarding the application proposed for a brownfield opportunity area nomination.
Perhaps Matt could stand up and just give a brief summary about what the heck this is all about.
He just told me the name.
Well, maybe there's no counting because nobody understands what the heck it is just from the title.
Matt Chatfield did address the board, but he's here, he can express that a little bit.
Great, Matt Chatfield, sixty-two part capital, also executive director of Webster Economic Development Alliance. Brownfield Opportunity Areas Program, it's a state-funded program through the Department of State and the summary of it is that it allows the town, village, city, provides planning funds to develop master plans for areas that could have been or had perceived potential impacts from old former industrial sites and the focus area of ours is the western portion of the Xerox campus. So it's a master planning opportunity that then allows for further state funds to help procure private investment sources, just planning.
Thank you.
If there's no one who wishes to address the board regarding the BOA application, then I will close the, close the public hearing. And at this time then we will move to the organizational meeting portion of our board The organizational meeting involves making a lot of appointments and involves a lot of the board members motioning and seconding and then saying hi to or hey to those items and those people who are brought to your attention. So first of all, I would like to appoint or make an appointment that is not subject to the board approval of Jerry Ecolito Jr. as deputy mayor to act as mayor when the mayor cannot fulfill his duties. And now to board designations. And there the thoughts are all set out.
Sure.
Four designations, the Canada River National Bank to be designated as the official bank of the Village of Webster and designate the Webster Herald as the official newspaper of the Village of Webster. Do I have the motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All approved or all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mayor's appointment subject to approval of the Board of Trustees, the first is reappointment of Heather. Holstead is village clerk for a term ending July eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. Reappointment of Joe O'Neal as deputy village clerk and deputy village treasurer, term ending July twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two. Reappointment of Marcia Adams as village treasurer for a term ending on July eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Reappointment of Don White as village and zoning board of appeals attorney for a term ending on July twelfth, two thousand twenty-two and authorize the mayor to sign the retainer agreement with Kelly White on the Frio Attorneys LLP.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. It'll be good down there. Zoning Board of Appeals, the reappointment of Mark Nicholson, chairperson of the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term ending July twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, and the reappointment of Michael O'Connor, member of the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term ending in July two thousand twenty-six.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The Historic Preservation Commission and historian, to reappoint Peter Alder, chairperson of the Historic Preservation Commission for a term ending July twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, and to reappoint Lynn Martin as village historian for a term ending July twelfth, two thousand twenty-two.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Parks and Recreation Committee, reappoint Peter Alder as the Parks and Recreation Committee for a term ending July twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, and to reappoint Missy Rosenberry to the Parks and Recreation Committee for a term also ending July twelfth, two thousand twenty-two. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Business Improvement District, the bid, appointing Mayor Byers, trustee Lancy, and Gordon Clark to the Business Improvement District Board of Directors for a term ending July twelfth, two thousand twenty-two. Hear a motion?
Make that motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The Ethics Committee, to reappoint trustee Ecolito Jr., village board member to the Ethics Committee, term ending July twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, to reappoint also Joe O'Neal as the village employee and reappoint Tom Sapolas as the village resident to the Ethics Committee, terms ending July twelfth, two thousand twenty-two. Hear a motion?
Make that motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. For the General Office, to set the mileage reimbursement for the authorized village employees traveling with their private vehicle to be fifty-six cents per mile.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The Village Office hours shall be Monday through Friday, eight AM to four thirty PM, except Thursdays, which will be eight AM to six PM, and Fridays, which are eight AM till eleven AM. Village office will be closed on Saturday and Sunday, and the office will be closed for all governmental holidays. Hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, may I ask, I couldn't hear who decided this.
Carol.
Oh, either. Thank you.
The following two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two Village of Webster policies are adopted as written in these sections for the policy manual and employee handbook and shall be effective July first, two thousand twenty-one. That's the procurement policy, which is section five-two. Hear a motion to approve the procurement policy as written in the policy manual?
Make that motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Village meetings, the village meetings are to be conducted according to section two-two of the policy manual, regular village board meetings will be the second and fourth Thursday of each month at seven PM. Meetings of the Zoning Board of Appeals on the third Thursday of each month at seven PM, and the village board workshop meetings will be on the first Thursday, assuming Tuesday of every other month at six PM. There is a change, however, to the following meeting dates, the village board workshop meetings have been changed from September seventh, moved to August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one, December seventh, moved to November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, June seventh, moved to May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, October fourth, moved to September twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two, and December sixth, two thousand twenty-two, moved to November twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two. Also, the following change of meeting dates for the village board meetings, village board meeting of November eleventh, two thousand twenty-one, has moved to November ninth, November twenty-fifth of two thousand twenty-one, moved to November twenty-third, July seventh of two thousand twenty-two, moved to July twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, and November twenty-fourth, moved to November twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two. Hear the motion to approve?
Make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Finally, we have our village board liaison assignments, there has been no change, I believe, from those assignments that were given last year and approved, so if there is no request for change, then we could ask for a motion to approve these appointments.
Make that motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor Byers, I found this, there's just, there was one change, and that was just because, this is probably obvious, but there's no more planning work, so Jude is no longer the lead on the back, so.
Finally, we have the date for the next organizational meeting, which will occur here approximately from now, Tuesday, July twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, at six thirty PM, prior to the regularly scheduled village board meeting. Following the organizational meeting, we will move directly into our regularly scheduled meeting. Hear a motion to approve?
Make that motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Anybody would like to read a copy of the or have a copy of the procurement policy, I have one, or one certainly available in your village office. We move now to our public comment portion of the meeting, and if you would like to address the board, I would ask you to come to the podium, state your name, and feel free to address the board.
Now before I start, is this a public part of the meeting now, or is this like the public speaking on a specific issue?
This is, this is just the public comment portion of the meeting, not speaking on any specific issue.
Okay, so I can just say what's happened, right?
Yes.
My name is Bill Rudolph, I live at forty-six Orchard Street in the village, and I'm here tonight to extend an invitation to this board in August, when a delegation from the nation of Ukraine will visit Webster and Reniquet. They are here on a specific mission to, as, as guests of the Ukrainian community, which if you know or you do not know, is quite large in the Rochester, Reniquet, and Webster area. Can you hear me all right? There will be representatives from the city of Dnipro, Ukraine, who will visit for approximately two weeks with various groups, Ukrainian-Americans in this community, to examine and, in a sense, appreciate the works of Volodymyr Mirko Pilischenko, who is renowned in this area as a man of letters, a former professor at Brockport College, and thirty-five years serving there and retired as professor emeritus of the Department of Art. He accumulated a vast, vast collection of rare books, manuscripts, interviews of Ukrainians and Ukrainian-Americans over, that spanned a hundred-year period, people who lived here in the early nineteen hundreds and their children and grandchildren and so on. These are all bound in manuscript form, and all of this material is now housed at the University of Rochester in their Department of Rare Books. This invitation is specifically pointed to the town board and the village board for on Friday, August twentieth, at six thirty PM, at the Ukrainian Cultural Center on Jackson Road, they will host a gala event, and the invitation will be that you will be asked to present some sort of proclamation welcoming them to our community. I have here, sorry, I didn't make copies for anybody, but I will leave it with your clerk, and you can look at it at your leisure, and if, I would appreciate either an email or a phone call in the next few days, so that we can determine what your pleasure is. So it would be wonderful to see any of you or all of you there, the invitation is open to all board members, to meet and greet, mingle, and associate yourselves with people that normally we do not get to see, people from a, from a nation such as Ukraine, which if we have bite a bitter pill in life, we would not want to do it and live like that nation has been forced to live for so many years. But for the last thirty years, they have been independent from the former Soviet Union, and even though the illustrious chairman of the board of Russia sees fit to nibble away at their borders, they still are pleasant, wonderful people to be with and live with. So thank you very much for your time, and I hope to hear from you soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill. To the end touch.
Hi, I'm Short. I'm Susan Buckman, and I live at forty-five Sherwood Avenue in the village. My dearly beloved Lee is here with me tonight. I've lived at the Sherwood Avenue address for about nineteen years now. Prior to that, Lee and I lived in a huge, very expensive home on State Road, Webster School taxes, Penfield Town taxes, and while we were living on State Road, his parents lived in the house on Sherwood Avenue, Clark and Dorothy Buckman, who are lifelong Village of Webster residents, former to that, they were on Gordon Park. When his father died, followed shortly by his mother, as an only child, he was running his own business, B and B Automotive, and so I went over to clean up the house, clean things out, get it organized, presumably to put Sherwood Avenue on the market for sale. While I was doing that, I get a little emotional, because I'm a city girl born and raised, and I was never a suburbanite, but while I was cleaning out Sherwood Avenue, I got this sense of neighbors, and I got this sense of community. We didn't have that on State Road, we were standalone, and I got this sense of a cozy, small, brick ranch that was very old, but there was history in the Village of Webster. I had books on my porch about the history of Webster, and I told my husband, who I think was kind of shocked, because most women like big fancy things, I just don't happen to be one of those women, I told him I felt we were putting the wrong house on the market. I told him I felt we needed to put State Road on the market, and we needed to move into the house on Sherwood and downsize kids being up and out, and make that our home, probably until we pass. It's creeping up on us too, we're both getting up there. So that's exactly what we did. We sold State Road, we moved into an old house that still had two-pronged outlets, we had to do a lot of renovations and upgrading, and we're still doing that. I met your code inspector the other day, because we had air conditioning installed by Han Heating, yay to Han, and so he'll be coming out at some point to do a final, but my point is, the first reason I suggested to him we were selling the wrong house was because of the tax situation. I was a medical office employee, I wasn't making a whole lot of money, and most of my annual salary was going to pay taxes to live in a big fancy house that I didn't need. The tax difference was substantial, and then when I got into the house and started looking at the community, started looking at things like the fireman's carnival and parade, like the Webster Village days, I wish we could bring that back, like where all the businesses could get out there and tell everybody what they do, the gazebo movies and concerts and the wine walks and all the little things that make a community a community, we didn't have any of that on State Road, and I really didn't have that sort of thing growing up in the city. So this to me was very cozy, it was very much America. I don't pretend to be very well-versed in government and politics, but the last few years has been pretty scary, and admittedly, I've been following more what's going on on a national level than a local level, and it scares me, and I definitely want to thank this board for letting us come and speak, because it seems to be one of the freedoms and rights we're losing today. A gentleman came up my driveway the other day with a little pink handout about the sewage waste system and how the town would like to incorporate the village into the towns. My toilets flush perfectly fine the way they are, and I just feel like this is, the town and village should be embracing each other and working together and not trying to consume one or the other, and I feel like that might be a little bit about what's happening here. Their first little nibble is going to be, let's take some money from the village people to finance the rest of the town for this plant they need that the village doesn't need right now, because our plant is doing just fine, maintained fine, good for a long When you don't need something and don't want something and won't benefit from something, as a village resident, I don't feel I should be paying for it. Contrast to many years ago, when we switched from village water to Monroe County, which I was thrilled, because I'd run a hot bath to take a nice soak and go in there, and it looked like somebody boiled a pot of coffee in my tub. I don't mind paying for something, my fair share, when it's something I benefit from and there's a need for, but for now, I feel the village has no need to be pulled into this, and for our village board to be consumed, and, and I could be wrong, it seems like politics is playing games here, but from what I've read online, since the gentleman gave me this pamphlet, if what I'm reading is factual, there are so many people in the town of Webster that desperately want to be hooked up to a sewage system and aren't. Give them that opportunity, I'm sure they're happy to pay some higher taxes to cover that, but don't come to us until we have a need, and if and when that need comes up in the village, let's look at our options. Do we need to do something to our own plant? Do we need to talk about merging with the town at that time? If there's a need, I'll get out my checkbook and I'll be the first one, you know, to pay more on the bill, to get what we need to keep the village what it is, but I think they should, it sounds like there's a little bit of head banging going on right now on this subject between the town and the village, and I think that's sad, because so many communities around Rochester don't have a village, and I think that's quaint, and that's charm, and that's America, and I think we should embrace it and hold on to it tight, and I just came here to ask you to vote no to merging with the town sewage plant plan at this time, and let's just hold our own, because we're doing just fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sharon, could you just give your phone number to Heather, or, we're also, we're looking for volunteers at the museum, so if you like history.
That's true. That's a real plug.
Hey, I love you.
Good evening, I'm Kevin Florak, twenty-four South Creek Drive, Webster area. More or less, what I've seen, we do get along with the town very well with the sewage treatment plants, we talk to each other, we work very well with each other, we're always willing to embrace new ideas, but it seems like lately that this is more of a money grab than it is about professionalism, and we have taken and seen past history where decisions have been made on properties that the village owned, and they're going to do the same thing with the village sewage treatment plan. I don't want something I don't want something just abandoned and laying there, dormant, being an eyesore. And I believe that the people are owed a lot better than that. I hate to say it, but the transparency and the openness of the open party has been more like a sheet of steel. I just don't see the openness at all. I see the people that did care that came down and took some honest notes and really gave a shot at open discussion, good and bad. It was meant to be open, and it was ignored. That's a nice one.
I know the board already knows my opinion on the switch, that we should definitely stay with the village. The facts show that for fifteen years or so, we will definitely be, this is by the village engineers report, be cheaper than the town. Now, the money you save in the next fifteen years, as taxpayers here save in the next fifteen years, if you put that money away, it'll probably pay for the next twenty years of higher prices if the village does go a little higher than the town. So, that puts the break-even point to taxpayers twenty-five years down the road. I don't know... I'm sure the mayor and I won't be around in twenty-five years. Some of the board members may be, but we won't. So, I see in that respect, no real reason to switch if we're going to save money for fifteen years and be ahead for probably twenty-five. All right? And on this matter, in response to a speaker at this board meeting a few weeks ago, a joint... What was called a joint meeting, although it was not technically a joint meeting, and we had guests here from the town, I would like to say, I am an accountant. I have had four years of higher education, where I was a business major. I had a degree in business, and I majored in accounting. So, I'd like to repeat that. I, too, am an accountant. And what I can tell you about accountants is, you give me the numbers, I'll make them say what you want these to say. As has been mentioned, the village plant is ahead of the town plant. The town has, for many years, done necessary maintenance, but has not done any real improvement. Now they're, because they had some problems with the D.C., are finished Phase One, and they're looking to do Phase Two, which is major upgrades and improvements and redoing the plant. The village, on the other hand, has been, as long as I've been in the village, constantly upgrading and keeping their plant as close up to date as they tend. At the last meeting, we heard in one report, the inspector said, "There's no way you can make that plant more energy-efficient," is one of the most energy-efficient plants he'd Okay? I'd like to also say that I am an accountant. We're going to keep repeating that, as that speaker that was up here for twenty-seven minutes or better did. Another problem I've seen with this whole thing is, until recently, when Webster Herald carried a large article about that meeting we had a few weeks ago, there's been very little effort on the village or the town to get a true message out to the taxpayers. The town has put a few things in the paper, but the town has also put numbers in the paper that nobody else can find. One thing that I'd like to draw people's attention to, an article that was in the... A letter to the editor that was in the paper just recently by our former supervisor, the one that this plan was originally put together under, that came up with a possible joining of the two plants. The very major authority on the subject said, "This is a bad deal for the village." As the previous figure over here said, when she said that it is not a good deal at this time, and we should not go forward with something that's not a good deal. I'd like to paraphrase one of our other residents, Mr. Jake Swingly, who had said, "You don't sell your nice car to go in a deal with your neighbor on his wreck." Thank you.
I can read it, but I just want to know if it's okay. Peter asked us to read something.
You want me to read it, or you can read it in the mess? What is it on your... Is it on your phone?
I just sent a picture of it to you. Here's my recording. I can read it.
Read that?
That's pretty long.
Sure. Mayor Byers, in the village board, "I am not able to attend the meeting this evening because of a scheduled conflict." This is from... Is this Peter?
Peter Elvin.
This is from Peter Elvin. "I am not able to attend the meeting this evening because of a scheduled conflict. Thank you for reading this short note. The village board members have done a great job at sifting through all of the information surrounding a potential consolidation of the village sewer system with the town. Thank you for your hard work. I remain convinced that the village's best course is to invest in its own system using extremely favorable grants and zero-financing options currently being offered. The village system is cost-effective, cutting-edge, efficient, and beneficiary of over eighty years of investment and oversight by village boards and some truly excellent employees. There is much less risk at the village ratepayers by upgrading our own system than choosing any other option. I am an optimist. The future holds endless possibilities. The Village of Webster is in a much better position to take advantage of these possibilities by retaining its own system. I encourage you to vote to keep our system and keep faith with a bright future." Again, thank you for reading this note.
I'm just going to leave a little bit on this whole thing, but I have some words that I want to say. It's on?
You've got to hold it clean.
With this voice, yeah. Okay. Tonight's decision on the sewer will have repercussions for generations to come and may define what it means to be a village. And I got to figure about this because of your statements. Cooperation is defined as a process of working together to the same end. What is the end we seek? As a village government, our job is to provide services to our residents at the most cost-effective means, using a holistic view of those efforts. What do we know about the options? The village will receive a $1.4-plus million grant if we stay on our home. The village will also receive an additional grant of $600,000-plus for disinfection. The village will enjoy 0% financing on the balance of our project. This is not subject to a bank approving our loan. The EFC is backing it. We have it. The village will lose all of the above if we choose to go regional. In a regional plant, the village users will pay more in energy to treat the same flow. In a regional plant, the village users will pay more in O and cost to treat the same flow. We don't know that the town is $3 cheaper than at us today, but they do not have their debt for Phase One of their project included. And that's a bit of a large amount. We don't know how much the town spent on Phase One. So, as a result of that, we don't know if we join it. We don't know the cost for Phase Two. We don't know the cost of the regional alternative. We don't know the additional cost to our general budget for the loss of sewer employees that work, all the work that they do for the village, because they just don't work on the sewer. They plow roads and sidewalks and clean leaves, I mean, hourly thing. They have a variety of work, and it's a small amount of man. So, I'm greatly concerned about that. And the expertise that we have with them is phenomenal. That's just some of... Because, I mean, I've got pages that I could talk about. So, yeah, those are all... Those are my concerns. And like, as you were saying, I love the village. I lived in the city for many years. I was born here, and I came back because it's the Village of Webster. I just, you know, I love the place, and I want it to stay the way it is. I want people to have wine on my porch. You know? Yeah. Anyway, that's all. Thank you.
I was here a couple of weeks ago when we were discussing the numbers. The numbers for Phase Two for the town of Webster, at that point in time, was $20 million. And I think that's what you have been discussing in your meetings. Well, they had a workshop about a week ago, and those numbers now are $31 million. That's an $11 million increase, just threw all the calculations out the window. They don't make any sense anymore. And I don't know why the village would sign on to something that the supervisor hasn't even told the town residents what it's going to cost them. I'm paying $192 today. You talk about Phase One, it was $12 million, minus $3 million in a bond. They got a bond, $9 million yet. They haven't done it. And they got to add that to the $192. And then, they got $31 million after that, minus a few grants, and they're going to add that. Not a supervisor, let me quote him here. "I feel strongly that open forums should be devoted, so that citizens can contribute their ideas and talent to making Webster the best it can be." He hasn't had an open forum. This whole process hasn't been opened with the residents of the village or the town. We've been invited to no meetings. We've been invited to no open forums, no open discussion, and he wants you to take a vote tonight. And I don't even know what my rate's going to be five years from now, ten years from now, because nobody has a number. It's that hard to figure out? That hard to put it in paper? I don't think you should vote yes. I'm not a village resident, but I don't think you should vote yes.
My name is Lori Reynolds, 138 Johnson Street. I just want to say, I think this is a no-brainer. I don't understand why you're even considering consolidation to take on millions of dollars of debt, even giving up the control of our sewer treatment plant. We don't know what the town will allow us to do, or how we are going to be able to control our sewers, our sewer treatment plant. Why would you even be considering putting the residents in this situation? Bad idea. Really bad. And if you guys vote in favor of this, I'm going to be losing my faith in my village.
Okay. If there's anyone else who would like to address the board, then I will close this public comment portion of the meeting, and we will move now to scheduled business. First item that we have is a resolution to approve minutes. We have minutes from two meetings. First is the June 10th, 2021 village board meeting. Any comments regarding... Which is, if not, a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Um...
Trustee Lindsay?
Aye.
Trustee Abalino?
Aye.
Trustee Valkyrie?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Second is minutes from the June 24th, village board meeting. Nobody has any additions or comment on it? I'll make that motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Valkyrie?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Abalino?
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Next, we move to our claims and warrants. Al and Jerry have a chance to look them over.
Good question for you. What's in our quadian?
That's the post... That's our mail machine.
Okay. That's my thought. Okay. Other thing I know has something to do with the plan...
Marshall, do you want to give him a mic? Thank you.
Camara? Something to do with the sewer treatment plant, or somebody wants to elaborate on that?
Fairclawry?
Yeah.
Fairclawry goes in and helps iron precipitate out the, well...
It's on. It's on.
Something we get almost every month.
Yeah, yes. Must not agree more.
Jacob, what's that called?
Jake, is that going to be a purchase that is for the year or part of the year?
It's for part of the year. It's part of the year.
Yeah.
A couple things. Well, no, it's a reorder. Four thousand gallons, and when it gets down to a certain level, we have to reorder. There's appeal that's done at the beginning of every year...
There's a peel that's done at the beginning of every year. It basically covers one of this for the year. We get it off of county's, state bid.
I think Welch's is, that's a pretty good check.
That would be neat.
That was you.
I asked Daryl for more.
Seven thousand dollars?
And that's for, I think, everything that's the plants, the mulch. I think he even had some topsoil in there.
Yep.
So there's a, yes, it's what they call spring, isn't it? There are pills. Oh, you have to hang the baskets.
Yeah.
I had a question on the itemized list from First Card. I believe it was for card. Earbuds. One for a hundred and forty-five dollars, basically, the other one for thirty-three something, so. Two different individuals.
Yep, they get that as part, so they're using that as part of their clothing allowance and they have sound clearing. So those are an approved item.
They're an approved item because they're part of the clothing allowance?
And they're for sound clearing?
Yeah, noise canceling.
Noise, noise clearing.
Or sound.
But they're wearing them while they're on the job. And I don't know if I approve that. If they're on the job, if they're, especially the one who is doing the watering of our plants wears those while he's on and going from one plant to another. He's on the road. So I don't see him ever turning them on or off. So I have a question about that. If he's on a motor vehicle and he's in traffic and he's wearing something that does not allow him to hear what's going on. And also, I'm not sure that's part of the clothing allowance that we ever designed that for.
Doesn't the union contract specifically set out the items approved? I don't know if it was in front of me, but I thought it was fairly specific as to what was and wasn't included.
Yes.
And I don't remember if earbuds are on the list or not.
I agree. That's why I have a question. We will investigate that.
Yeah, we can.
Anything else? Get anything else? If that bothered you, no comment, then I would ask for a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Trusty Lethy?
Aye.
Trusty Valkey?
Aye.
Trusty Ibelino?
Aye.
Trusty Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passed.
All right, our next item on the agenda this evening is a resolution to move the next Village Board Meeting to Thursday, the twenty-ninth at seven P.M. That is a change one week.
Mayor Byers, I felt right, on the new agenda, I moved that to item four, just in case you need something sooner.
Okay.
Sorry.
We can do it now anyways.
Okay. What if you need it?
What?
If you need more meetings sooner, please stop.
Well, if we set this on the twenty-ninth, if we need more sooner, we can.
Okay.
Go for a special meeting. So this is, this is now, again, item three. It's a resolution to move the next Village Board Meeting regularly scheduled to Thursday, the twenty-ninth at seven P.M.
Trusty Ibelino?
Aye.
Trusty Lindsey?
Aye.
Trusty Valkey?
Aye.
Trusty Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Then, next item on the agenda is a resolution to consolidate the village's sanitary sewer collection system with the Town of Webster's sanitary sewer collection, to consolidate the sewage treatment plants at the Town of Webster's sewage treatment plant, all conditioned upon the execution of a satisfactory municipal agreement with the Town of Webster regarding the governance and operation of a consolidated sewer system. Do I have any comment from the board on the resolution? We probably don't.
You already know how I feel, so I'm, so there's everyone else. I don't see that we should. They mean us, and I do not believe that we need that period. Say more, the numbers just don't add up to what they keep on trying to tell us. It just doesn't.
Any comment? Do you want to ask for a motion?
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Trusty Ibelino?
Aye.
Trusty Valkey?
Aye.
Trusty Lauer?
Aye.
Trusty Lindsey?
No.
Mayor Byers?
I'd like to read this. "I have been involved in the decision process since it began. I have sat through a myriad of meetings. I have read through reams of paper. I have listened to residents, business owners, both for and against the regional consolidation. The engineers, both Mabella and Barton, the Judy's, I never could say it, have presented their estimates for regional consolidation and continued separate treatment of sewage. I have noted the grants given and in place that are in place as well as those that are possible and hoped for. I have read the November article in the Regional, or excuse me, the Rural Water Magazine, giving our plant a glowing report. I have noted also the Xerox decline and also the possibilities that exist possibly in the future, especially if the village is allowed to take over the roadways and open the Xerox campus up to private industry. And finally, as mayor of this village, I have prayed at length about this decision, that it be representative of the best interest for our village community. I know that the decision reached will be received well by some and disliked by others. But it bears no personal ill will towards anyone. It is what I discern to be simply the best for the Village of Webster at this time. I vote no."
Motion's out.
At this time, we will ask if the attorney has anything for us this evening.
Just two things. First, I want to thank everyone on the board.
Aye.
I just wanted to thank everyone for your kind thoughts and the card and the plant and the donation for my dad. Yes, sir. And second, thank you for reappointing me as attorney for the village. I really appreciate your trusting and that's it.
Well, we're happy you have me. Okay.
Sorry to send Joe right to your door with the plant.
I wasn't home, so. I was at my mother's house. So, but I really appreciate it.
Now, every time I drive on and off, I get float lights. I can remember that day I was working in our house.
Were you, you must have been a young teacher when I was, did you, were you teaching at the time when you was at Arrow Town?
I started in seventy-three.
Yeah, he was there first.
He was there in Taiwan, that's how I got to come over to him. Okay. Do you have any, anything from the office?
Our new office clerk is scheduled to start on the sixteenth. Monday, she's gonna start Monday. Oh, Monday, our new office clerk will be starting on Monday. We're really excited for that.
Are you excited?
Yay. Oh, my gosh.
And she's wonderful, so we're really excited.
So, looking forward to meeting her. Okay, Jake, anything from DPW and?
Sure. Yes, we're doing brush pickup this week. It's almost, well, I guess we're two days in, but thinking, I just want to thank people again for when they put it out. They put the butt ends and the cut ends out towards the street. It makes it a lot easier to, easier to pick up. I mean, a lot of people taking advantage of that. Sewer, you know, Kevin was out doing a camera job yesterday. One of our residents who found some issues in their laterals, gonna get that fixed. And we helped the fire department last week on one of the, a catch base in a lot that was impacting the business or village businesses. So, fire department asked us for help on that. We were able to mitigate that hazard. Just want to remind people underfoot, things out so you can keep them out of the gutters in the street. Or if you're, you know, if you're walking, don't hang out in the street. Or if you're walking by and you see a bunch of leaves from all the rain, you get piled on top of one, you can take the stuff off because it'll help. You know, it seems the last few years, it doesn't rain all day anymore. It rains two inches in thirty minutes. So, you know, when there's flood warnings, you know, check out there for tonight again. You know, we're gonna get the sewer system, or excuse me, the storm system can only take so much water so fast. So, patience, obviously, but we want to make sure that stuff's going down and that the drains are clear. So if we see them at a time, and so forth.
Did you go over to look at the drain at the?
Museum lot? It had gone down by the time I was, I was up at the other business trying to do that, because there were water going into it. So we got a fire call and I met Kevin out there who were working to get that, get that cleared away. So, I plan, by the time I went by, there probably the museum lot, it was going down. And our lot out here, it's, when it's really, really flooded rain, it's, you know, I came in, what day was it? It was last week, and there was mulch, well, three spots away from the planters. It was, got that high, there was the drain, and that, that flooded rain so fast. And I was looking back, the rain the other day when we had, it was falling at a rate of, I think it was like three, three points, three or three point four inches an hour. And I looked back at the history, it was August of last year, I think it was, it was August of last year or August of nineteen, I forget now. Where they had rained at a rate of over thirteen inches an hour. I mean, it rained for a short period of time, but, and it was three inches a lot. I don't want to remember that thirteen. That's a lot of, or a lot of, you know, a lot of, it was a pretty fast rate, so.
I do have. I would like to announce a couple of things of significance here in the village. I think that you have time, it doesn't begin till eight-thirty, to, from here, go down to the gazebo and watch the movie in the park this evening, which is The Trolls. Matthew's tonight, July thirteenth, at eight. Would like to do that in a blanket and come on back down. July twenty-third, there is the Red Hot and Blues, Blues Band, Blue Blues Band. They have played several concerts off their back porch over on Park Avenue. They are very good and they will be playing down at the Gazebo Park. And I believe a special for Christmas in July is the Elf Movie, which will be July twenty-seventh. And that's a favorite always. So come on down to Gazebo Park for the movies. There will be two other movies this summer in August, but we've announced that Jazz Festival will be back. Jazz in the Pumps will be playing the twenty, excuse me, September seventeenth. And they have different groups that play in different pubs from six to eleven P.M. And that's a Friday night, I believe. And then Saturday night, or Saturday, or the afternoon as well as the evening. The Webster Jazz Festival will be Jazz on the Street. And that is September eighteenth from four P.M. until eleven P.M. So, things are beginning to pick up again. Again, we would ask that everybody be, again, cautious, be proactive. If you're not vaccinated, consider it. There are several different ones out there, choose your preference. But we thank you. We thank our governor for allowing us to be back and returning to a semblance of normalcy, so. That's good. Anybody else have something?
Yeah, I've got a couple. And it has to do with museum. We're gonna be putting on an exhibit of Wardman's paintings, August fourteenth and fifteenth, for the volunteers and his family. And then, we're going to try to open the museum by the twenty-first. So, and we're really looking forward to that. We've got a lot of it to do in there. And I wanted to thank our village DPW and, yeah, and Billy Mendel from Welch's for helping out with the front of the museum. They took out all the old shrubs and mulch and they got it all cleaned out. He gave, Bill gave us a format for plantings and everything else. And I've got, some of the volunteer women are even going to pay for like each plant. And then Bill's going to give us money towards some of it. So anyway, I thank you and I thank Welch's, and they have helped so much with this year to make it start looking good again. We want people back in the museum. There's so much history and we're looking for volunteers.
That's another pitch.
Yes. Yes. We're looking for volunteers, everybody that loves the village. You just give us a call. And then we're having a barn sale also. We're having a big barn sale. It's three ninety-four Phillips boat. We have it, well, we didn't have it last year, but we're gonna have it in September, the seventeenth and eighteenth.
That's always good.
And that's always, and it's fun too, yeah.
Is that Mr. Russell?
No, I said.
Jan, Jan Niallvis. Yeah. And then, the last thing that I had is Historic Preservation Commission would like to make the site of the month for artists of the village hall. We have huge amounts of history on it. And I was just wondering if that would be okay with everybody if we do that?
I agree.
Okay? Okay, I'm done.
One thing real important, what the mayor was talking about when things happened again, I just got an email earlier tonight with a request for a road closure from the bit for the twenty-ninth of July. So it's, our meetings will be that night, it's short notice. It's going to be real short, but they're, they're looking, there's still some coordination there, but they're looking to try to do a quick, sort of abbreviated parade. I don't know if that's in conjunction with their Christmas in July, if they're looking to do an inflated parade. It seems like the hours are not.
Social media has flooded parade. It looks like it's already done deal for today.
It'd be nice if they let us.
Just saying, no.
No, that's, no.
Don't ask me about that.
Yeah, no, they did so, and it's going to be our, you know, our meeting, so it'll be after the meeting, because it's going to be dark if the things are lit up, I'm assuming, so. But yeah, there was something else, and we wanted time to make an announcement before, that'll be, that'll be fun, too. And if you see us putting up a couple little inflated, or inflatable Christmas decorations, we have not lost our mind.
No, I think, I think it's going to be fun, I really like that.
Yeah, I think it's neat.
Yeah, that'll be a good time. And that's what makes a village, yes.
What we could do, if we could have notice that people would come in through the entrance by the fireball park is that, and to leave that way, instead of coming in, do not remain sure.
Well, we could do, we could block it off. Yes.
Yeah, they were up on the same, end of the same route as the typical fireman's parade.
So Jake, it says Thursday, July twenty-ninth at seven P.M. So when we say they will be in our meeting.
Oh, I was just, I'd assume if they were to put all the lights on it, that would be dark.
So do you want to change it back? So the purpose of that was that for bill day, we don't have a lot of time till the next meeting, and then after the twenty-second, we won't have another meeting until the twelve, so that's a big.
Do you know when they plan to go? I mean, the weather is dark, so they plan them at six and maybe seven, like, or six-thirty.
I think there's still some coordination.
I mean, we could go at six o'clock, that's fine.
Maybe safer, I don't know, there's a lot of things, but.
Is that okay?
It's okay with me.
Sure.
Don?
So you want to change the meeting back?
To midnight six. The time. Six o'clock.
Yeah, you need a resolution for that.
All right. We will take a resolution to change the time of the July twenty-ninth meeting from seven P.M. to six P.M. to allow us to.
Good.
Six, to have people come to the meeting, and then also to be able to egress out of here before the parade, so. Okay?
I'll make that motion.
I'll pass.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Valkyrie? Trustee Ibelido? Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Anything else? Then thank you for coming, and the meeting is, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote. Jerry?